Like to call this meeting to order pursuant Master General Law Chapter thirty twenty here by informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. Also like to say if you're going to make your own recording, you need to inform the chair. Thank you. First up, public comment.
Chair, I have a received an email from a member in town that I'd like to summarize for public comment. Is that appropriate for public comment?
Sure.
So I received an email from a woman I know a little bit named Marilyn Wyatt. She lives up just up above the, well.
Maple Street.
On Maple Street. That's it. Thank you. And she wrote about parking. She read that we were thinking about having the public safety relocate and maybe tear down one of the two buildings that are there and turn it into a parking lot. And she, she thinks that parking is not a serious problem in Lee, that there's plenty of parking. No matter now, maybe she has a, she's lived all over the world, I know, so, and mostly big cities. So I don't know what her standard is, but, you know, certainly I can say based on my own experience compared to almost any big city, Lee does not have a parking problem. So what she sent was links to two articles. One from the Financial Times, which is an English newspaper, and the other one from the New York Times reviewing a book that was recently published about parking. And the argument in both cases was that parking is basically given too much space in American cities and in cities around the world. Then, and it was, it was interesting, interesting argument. This fellow who wrote the book began the book by talking about New York City as being a place where people, many people don't own cars, but a few do, but they don't use them day on a daily basis. They use the buses and the subways. And, but they, if they have a car, they need a place to park it. And so in this city, you know, with the highest real estate prices in the world, they get free parking on the street if they can find it. And then they, the article went on to discuss about how other cities like Chicago have found that, Chicago, I guess, leased out its parking meter rights to a private company. And you know about this Conrad? And apparently the private company raised the rates and discovered that people would pay a lot more for parking than they were being charged. And, and the city wound up saying, well, we're going to waive parking fees for our, you know, Fourth of July festivities on these three blocks. And the, the private company said, oh, no, you're not. And so Chicago, I guess, wound up ruining its delegation of its parking authority. But the point was that, that parking is something that is often under discussed and we just sort of, you know, have whatever parking people build. Sometimes we require more parking than is necessary, which spreads out the population and reduces density. So I'm, I'm not taking a position here. I'm just trying to relay what's in the articles. And I sent the articles today through Beth or copy to Beth to the master plan committee, and I forgot to do you guys. So could I ask if Beth will forward the articles to you? I, I clumsily added two copies of each, as you probably saw, Beth. They only need one copy of each. Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to report that. Now, I don't know if Marilyn Wyatt is on the call. She said she was going to try to zoom in. Has she been able to?
I do not see her.
Okay.
But I.
And I've, I will conclude my report then.
There is, yeah, I don't know the, if any of you ever, there's a whole bunch of different little YouTube things out there about planning, urban planning, all that. If you catch those and there's a few guys doing stuff and basically explain how bad we screwed up in America. It, we really, we thought we were, you know, building the stuff great and, and everything is like, and now we have this giant. I mean, here's not bad, but if you go down south and you see the urban sprawl, it's just.
And you have to get in a car to go anywhere.
Anywhere.
And every place you would go is surrounded by acres of asphalt. Keeping things separate, so you can't really walk between things. And they, the article, you'll see the articles, but they talk about different cities having different percentages of surface area devoted to parking. But some places it's forty percent is just devoted to cars. And, you know, on the master plan, I'm going to talk about the master plan when that comes up, but it, it matters for the master plan. Because one of the things I was trying to push a little bit in the master plan group was the idea that maybe we should have what people call a fifteen minute town where you can walk to just about everything you need to within fifteen minutes of home. Now, people who are up on Devon Road won't be able to do that, but if you're in the downtown area, it'd be nice if, you know, there was a grocery store and a cafe and a, you know, an alley, whatever, all within walking distance, but.
Done? No, we, we glitched.
And we looked up and it looked like I was done.
Oh, you keep on going.
No, I'm done.
We lost Matt, but Jack's still on here. Yeah, but we'll talk more on that in the master plan update. During public comment, I would like to say we received, it's in your packet, letter of resignation from Matt Carlino. And as the chair, I will accept that letter of resignation.
Regret.
Yeah. It was a good run, eight years.
Excellent letter.
He did eight years and he's moved on and he'll, I got a feeling he'll be back.
I'd like to make a motion to thank Matt for his excellent service on the board.
A second, you have Peter.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so.
Can we, can we suggest a replacement? Is that?
Well, in the interim, we already have a alternate that will act as. Are you, should we, if you're interested, should we forward your name to the select board to be appointed?
Good to me. Hey. You guys are okay with it?
Yeah, I look for a motion.
I'll move that Conrad Decker, that the, this board recommend Conrad Decker be the replacement for Matt Carlino and send that recommendation to the select.
What's happening there?
Okay, we'll do a roll call on this. Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Okay. You can do that, Beth? Hey.
Yeah.
Just, almost. Hey, next up, we have a Form A. Jack, it's all yours.
My name is Jack Magnati. I'm with Forsyte Land Services and the, the Form A is for property on Stockbridge Road. And it's located just east of the Church Street intersection. And as it sits right now, I believe the, the entire piece of land, I think, is, is about twenty-eight acres, but they would like to separate the house on a zoning compliant lot, which is shown on the plan as six point nine nine acres and has, I think the zoning district here is RA, which requires, let me see. I think, I think at the minimum lot frontage is a hundred and twenty-five feet and we're providing about five hundred and twenty-four. And it requires forty, forty thousand square feet of area. And again, we're six point nine nine acres. So it's a, it meets the zoning requirement, has access to an existing building. There's a house on this lot. And what's going to happen is the remaining portion is still vacant land, but that exceeds the zoning minimums. I think that has about three hundred and thirty-five remaining feet of frontage and also about twenty-one and a half acres. So that constitutes a legal lot as well, what's remaining.
The, you're talking the James Waldman and Sarah Williams lot, Lot Six? Yeah, what is that one? Is that's part of the property also, isn't it, that you're dividing out?
No, that, that was a part of the property, but we, the board approved a plan that's, that's recorded. And that was conveyed off from Johansson to Waldman and Williams. That, that three acre lot was endorsed, I think, last year. I'm sorry, the planned date was October twenty twenty-one. October eighteenth, the board signed off on that lot, three point oh eight acre lot that was conveyed to was it Williams and Waldman?
Just a house that's on there right now.
Yeah.
That, that remains. It's not showing a side setback. I'm assuming that setback is still conforming. The creation of the subdivision lot did not make a nonconformity of that setback, correct?
From, from the existing building, I think there's sixty-three feet to the new, new lot line that we're proposing. And it only needs twenty-five for the side yard.
This is town water and town sewer? No, it's town water, but not.
It's, it has its own well, so there's a water supply on the site, but yeah, I can't speak to the, I think, I think they have a private septic as well, but.
They do. No sewer. Do you know where the septic system is on that, on that, what you mean, right on the house lot? Okay, look at the setback.
Yeah, I, I believe the septic, if it's, if it's actually, it would be behind the house downgrade away from the street, away from the well, but it would be behind the house in the, in the clearing area as shown on the plan.
Any idea what they're going to do with the remaining twenty plus acres?
I, I don't know what their intentions are to do with that, to hang on to it. I'm not sure.
It's going to be landlocked?
No, it's got frontage right there.
Yeah, but if that's if it stays, they could take that one lot and chop it off in half, leave the big block behind it as something else.
Turn it into four lot subdivision, if they wanted to.
Yes. That's what I'd do. Possibly, I mean. But that'd have to come be, if they want to do that, they've still got to come before us again.
We put more houses back, they're going to have to build a road.
Yeah. Probably, yeah, do a subdivision. Anybody see any issues with this?
No.
I have one.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we accept the Form A.
Hey, roll call vote. Conrad? You get to vote.
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Uh, Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Okay, so endorsed. Thank you.
So we need to sign.
Now we get to go signing.
Okay.
Okay. All right, it'll be with Beth.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Eagle Mill status. We reached out and we got a letter back. Now, who is? Who are you? John Decraker. Who?
You know, four different people.
Okay.
Do, do we know what EagleMillBerkshires.com is? Is that?
Yes, yes. But I had to speak on Cohen.
Correct. Oh.
Yeah.
The Housing Authority was one of those four and they didn't answer? Wow, that's too bad.
Have the closing occurred? Closing has occurred?
I thought they're going to be constructing, demolishing.
The original permits had to be taken out by Cohen because he was still the owner. For the demolition permits. And Cohen was supposed to be selling to Berkshire Housing and.
Yeah.
That'd be the, the mill itself. Yeah, I think, sounds, sounds like they're going to start with the houses with a demo within the next couple of weeks. Um, we'll keep the feelers out with the rest of the people. What was the, there was a developer in there. Peter, what, Reese, anybody Reese something?
Reese Larkin was the name.
Larkin.
Owen Gaines, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe he found somebody else.
Maybe. Was, did Jeff Cohen? He didn't answer this, this guy, I guess. Is he in the country?
Probably took his funds. I said to Gordon, when he first got his money, he said, did Jeff send you a forwarding address?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we know what's going on on the other side of the street?
That's dead. They sold back.
They sold it back?
Yeah. Everything got sold back, nothing.
Yeah.
How about?
Dorito guy. He bought that, that was supposed to be, the other two were all pending.
In Jenny's?
Yes.
Jenny owns that. I think he backed.
What? I don't know.
Well, anyways.
Let's see who it comes up with.
The only one I would question. Because the other two parcels have new for sale signs on them.
Oh, you mean the old Leaper boat, isn't that?
Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Yes.
Kentucky Fried Chicken. And the quilt shop.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, they both are.
Yeah, and we fixed the lot line for him.
Right.
It looked like it was going to, it was on a contract sale.
Right.
And we fixed the lot line and then.
Right.
It's like the deal might have fallen apart.
Yeah, I think it did.
It.
It did fall apart.
I mean, they bought the bank down here.
They bought, yeah.
So that's what.
Yeah.
And the Jenny piece, did the?
Well, see, that's the only one I thought he had bought.
The buyer, you have an option on it?
No, I thought he bought it.
That's the only one too, that I heard possibly.
It's, I don't know. It's bizarre. It's listed as.
Well, if work starts within two weeks, that's good news.
Good. Jenny's, yeah. And Jenny's is listed as Peter Puchalowski, trustee.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
Now, the main thing, my main interest is, is the Eagle Mill project. And it's been stalled for so long, it's really an embarrassment in town and it took that long. You have one reason right after another why it was phoned and once, one problem would get solved and another problem would pop up. But I guess we're at the end. That's good.
Yep. Okay. But we'll keep, Beth, if we hear anything else from anyone. We're done with public comment.
It's about this issue.
Eagle Mill?
Issue, yeah.
Eagle Mill, you're on? Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Wait a minute.
I can't get on the Zoom. That's why I had to come in here.
Oh, okay.
There were a couple of times, there was, there was no Zoom connection at all. I tried from five of six until ten after when I said I give up and drove in here.
Um, Beth, you want to see what we got here? It was, we just had Peter on there.
Yeah, I touched, well, usually you have a separate agenda, on the agenda, there's usually a separate link to a Zoom, but I kept touching the Zoom and it kept saying, no meeting exists. So just, just letting you know, that's why I'm here. And I, I apologize for not getting.
No problem.
But I tried to just go in because I had questions and I apologize if you already touched on this. Has anybody reached out to Berkshire Housing? Because as far as I know, they've got demo permits, but I don't think they've even applied for their housing.
We just, yes, we have.
Okay, they just did? Because last week, okay, because last week, probably after I came in, I came in to ask that a building department. For Berkshire Housing.
They pulled what, demo permit so far?
Only the demo.
Yeah.
And that's because, again, he was behind in taxes. He couldn't get a permit till he settled up with the.
Right.
Collector and made a to bring some of it up to date. There's still, he still owes tax, but he has a plan in place to.
So did you see the, we did get a response from a John Decraker.
Yeah.
And he says, the Eagle Mill project is preparing to commence construction activities within the next two weeks. Work will begin with cleanout and hazardous materials abatement, which will be followed by demolition. Bulk demolition will begin with houses along West Center Street. Feel free to reach out again if you have any questions.
Nope, perfect.
Not all we got.
I would have listened, but I'm afraid that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm on the Zoom meeting and that's why I wanted to know what, what update. This had somebody asked me today.
We'll see.
What's going on?
We'll see in two weeks.
That's what I.
We heard two months, we've heard six months, we've heard, you know, it just goes on and on and on.
I understand and believe me, it drives us as crazy as it's driving you. So, all right, well, thank you. That, that's really, I won't go anywhere else. But I did want you to know that the Zoom connection wasn't working.
Gordon, you should know that Beth contacted four people about this and only heard from the one. The other three were.
Of course, yeah. Yep. See, I know they have their demo permits, but they don't have any, as far as I know, no implementation for going forward with construction. I know there's no plans for how they're going to create these units, as far as I know. And that concerns me a little bit. I mean, Berkshire Housing said long ago, they were hot to go, they were ready to roll. They needed was the last little bit of money. Well, you're telling me you didn't have your architectural drawings ready? You didn't have anything ready? You know, this, this just, it makes me worry about what people. How truthful, how much, not, not how truthful, how much we can believe what they say at face value. Perhaps there's other things they didn't explain.
I know Dew has a set of drawings.
Who does?
Dew, D W.
Yeah, well.
To some of those.
That may be for drainage stuff, but there's, there's been no construction drawings.
No.
Stamps, nothing, architectural stamps.
You won't see that until they do their, pull their building permit.
Right, exactly. Until they attempt to, and it would be great. So the town, before he misses one and then he'll be back in a situation where he's not going to be able to get a permit.
Yeah.
So anyway, well, thank you. I don't mean to interrupt anything else.
We'll probably, probably hit them again, a reminder that you sent an email because they're, they're kind of the, the funding key in all this. But I, I, that's how I take it, right, Berkshire Housing?
They get it through the state, you know, they got a lot of money through the state and the issue is, they said they had it now.
Yeah. Again.
Is there a risk that we will have demolition and no construction?
If they don't keep up with their tax obligations and whatever arrangement they made with the collector, then that's a possibility.
But we, I think.
We need to get a permit application. This window, at least we know where he's caught.
So I think we have only half the answer we need. We know about the demolition.
That'd be so foolish.
We need to know about the construction. And it's, you know, I wouldn't be worried except for two things. One is they didn't answer and number two is they haven't applied.
Yeah.
So I am a little worried and I think we should ask for them to come in and talk to us at our next meeting.
Wouldn't be a bad idea.
You have to know if the, Jeff Cohen was supposed to be closing with Berkshire Housing this month.
I have to reach out and probably get a date from Berkshire Housing possibly.
But luckily, before you close on a deal like that, you want to have all your building permits in your hand.
Generally, yeah, right.
A lot do.
I, I just wanted to bring to the town. I was hoping to come here and actually aim in, not to just.
We, yeah.
Deal with this, but yeah, I was hoping somebody was here.
When I, remember I took a tour through the mill?
Yes, yes.
And that first part of demolition, the oldest building, I mean, they're going to take the floors right out of it.
Yep.
Once they pull all those floors out, they ain't really got nothing holding the building together.
They better have a reconstruction plan in place and start working.
Well, I, I would think they should have it now.
They did want to start taking a new floor at a time and perhaps brick walls together, but I'm not allowed.
And we're, and we're really not their G C either, so.
That's correct. And it's, you know, the work necessarily the architect or engineers to see.
They tear up the corners, they keep the walls up, next thing in the walls are pulling the roof being destroyed.
That's their issue.
That's right.
Yep.
Then see you later.
That's all means and wants it by.
Well, I, I just can't, you know, it's going to be tens of thousands just to do demo. Did not continue on. Yeah.
I think hundreds.
Oh, I'm, right.
Yeah.
Hundred, so, so to not have something coming along would, would just, it, it wouldn't make any sense, so.
I'm in full agreement with you. As I said, I was hoping to see somebody here from Berkshire Housing talking to you. I didn't take Jeff Cohen here, but I thought Berkshire.
Oh, we didn't get back, they didn't reply back, but.
Sorry for that.
Well, we, we just got to them, you know, like mid last week, so we'll, we'll keep on them. We'll keep on them.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
If we can get somebody.
I will come on. Thank you very much. I will leave now.
You can stick around. We're going to talk about master play, all exciting stuff. Come on. Master plan update is.
Yep.
I'll stay for half of that.
Sorry, I did it.
That's what I'd like to stay too.
Peter hates me now. Okay.
I'll tell you when we get to the halfway point, though. So we continue to meet monthly. We've had effectively a change in staffing. We started off with one staff person and we now have a different person who's working very well with us, a guy named C J Haas. He's a former planner from Pittsfield who went to the Regional Planning Commission some months ago and then took us, took Leon as one of his major projects, but he, he has others. And he helped us, he was present at the February meeting that we had, so some of you may have met him. And we have been continuing our work of learning about the town, meeting with town officials, trying to meet with people in the public sector. We're going to be meeting a week from Thursday next time. And the agenda for that is going to be to discuss how the extra project on the Economic Development Survey is going to be done. You know, we, the town signed an extension of the contract, but extending it to the end of December and also adding money to do a survey of businesses, businesses in town. And we had been sort of a little bit on the same track, so we're going to be talking about that at our meeting, week from Thursday, for how that gets coordinated, what different pieces will be. But the big event in the upcoming Thursday meeting will be the first real presentation of text from our staff, which we have not had up until now. We've had, you know, outlines of text and chapter headings and stuff, but now we're going to be having somewhere between, I think, twenty and forty pages of a, hopefully more like twenty, of a background section on Lee describing pretty much all the relevant facts in summary fashion. I have asked the staff person to model it pretty much on the kind of write-up that Great Barrington has in its plan, which is a pretty, a pretty short overall beginning that describes the town and what its strengths are and what its goal, broad goals are, what it thinks is, is working really well, what it needs to work on. And, and then go right into, after that section is complete, then go right into goals and, and objectives. And then have appendices, instead of having pages and pages of tables showing, you know, the average age of the person, you know, who's lived here ten years, that kind of detailed stuff. We're going to put all that in the appendices. So the, the outline is background section, goals and objectives, appendices, three major parts. The first part, as I said, is going to be sent to the members for review on Wednesday, the fifteenth. And we'll have a week to review it. We'll meet next week and talk about what we think is missing or needs to be, needs to be added or subtracted. And that should be pretty much a two hour meeting. And, uh, that should be pretty much a two-hour meeting. We also, um, I mentioned earlier the comment, uh, we received from Marilyn Wyatt about parking, and I think the committee may want to talk about that topic as well, I circulated the, her e, or the articles that she referred to, to the committee. Uh, and then, uh, I think we're gonna be missing people, uh, as they go on vacation for July and August. We'll continue to meet once a month, but I'm expecting we'll get really, uh, in gear in September and probably have two meetings a month, uh, I'm still officially hoping to finish at Christmas, but I don't really know how long the road is ahead, there's a lot of possibilities for debate between now and the end of, of the, uh, of the plan, and we're gonna wanna have, we're definitely gonna wanna have another public exposure event for the draft, once we have it pretty well nailed down, something to send out to the town and have another meeting with townspeople and say, is this, you know, are we heading in the right direction or the wrong direction? And I don't know if we can accomplish getting that done by Christmas, but again, officially, I'm hoping we can.
Just a second, yeah?
Uh, I understand that's, the housing data has been re, received up in Pittsfield at the staff office, I have not seen it. I don't know, I, I don't know why, you know, to, June of two thousand twenty-three, the April twenty-twenty census is still a mystery, but apparently, I, I don't have any reason to think that the population data is out yet. The housing data is, I hear.
And are, are they using the Berkshire Benchmark stuff also? For data or not?
What's the Berkshire Benchmark?
It's the countywide, um, data that, um.
Is it, this American Something Survey that they've been using before the census data came out, and they, the staff advised us that this survey company's data is always pretty close to whatever the census eventually comes up with, but that's what we've been using on an interim basis. Understanding that the census data will replace it when it becomes available, but I don't know anything about the thing you mentioned, Buck.
Yeah, Berkshire, that's, it's actually done through Berkshire Regional.
Oh, so then.
Art Malloy does that there, and so CJ, I'm sure CJ knows, yes.
Yeah, they, I could tell you more if you want to give me a call after Wednesday, I, I can send you, send you what I get on.
Sounds like you're on the road.
And the demographics aren't in yet.
So far as I know, Peg, but they don't, they don't call me when they arrive, you know?
Oh, I know, but when they come.
Yeah.
Gordon.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, um, just a question, and I think there is one, but is there a member? So, or the gaze on over to the, um, hesitation group that meets? Like, so they?
Not through the membership, but through CJ, because
Okay.
all three of the projects, the master plan project, the outside recreation plan, and the hazard are all being staffed by people from regional planning.
But not this fellow, the same person?
Different people, yeah, they're different, three different people.
Maybe, maybe if you could just mention to make sure they reach out to the housing obligation person.
Okay.
Because there may or may not be. That would be helpful to you guys as you're going.
Know that CJ is aware of it generally, but I don't know how frequently he's checking in with that person.
That was giving my child going down.
No, that's.
Make sure that was on the table, that, that we're kind of like.
Yeah.
Not going down parallel train tracks, but somewhere where we're at, at least understanding what each other's saying.
I should also say that, um, Kathy's the chair of the outside, what is it, outside recreation? Open space and recreation, yeah, uh, committee, and, and, um, she has her own group meeting, she has her own staff person, Seth something, Seth? Jenkins, yeah. And, uh, and the, my understanding is that when they reach the end of their process, they're gonna give us a chapter for the master plan on their topic.
Do your business, yes.
Don't go yet, hey, we had, um, Matt Colmer is on now, hey, Matt, you there?
Yeah, I'm here, Corey.
Yeah, gonna back up a little, we, we got a email from one of the people from Eagle Mill, and they said they're gonna start demolition within a couple of weeks. Have you seen any, uh, building permit stuff starting to come in yet?
Yeah, actually, um, we're pretty much a go on the demo stuff. We have, I have, yep, I have a meeting uh, tomorrow, uh, to go over some of the construction documents and all that good stuff, and hopefully we can, hopefully, we, I anticipate, if, if we can get through this one issue, I anticipate being able to issue a permit for them to do everything by the end of the month.
And that's the demo end, correct, or?
Demo's set, demo's, yeah, demo's good to go. It's just the, it's just the, the outfitting of the, of the reuse of the building.
Okay.
So wait a minute, I, I don't understand, is, is the construction plan before you for review, Matt?
The construct, yes, I have the construction application as well, um, but the demo permits were, were, um, applied for prior because he was trying to get all his ducks in a row.
Okay, so he has, it's in, we're further along than we thought, good, there we go, glad you stuck around. Thank you, thank you, Matt, that, um, that really filled in some gaps for us.
Oh, good.
One other thing on the master plan, uh, Bessie Strickler has resigned, and, uh, I've asked the, um, uh, school board if they want to have a person or master plan group now, and I think we should, so I've asked them to uh, nominate somebody, and if I get a name, I'll bring it to you and we'll get that person appointed.
Great, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, um. All set?
That's it.
Okay. Um, moving on, we, um, Matt, did you have anything for us?
Uh, no, not specifically, just knew that you'd talk about some topics I might be able to help with, so I figured I'd stop in, I had Zoom meetings anyway, so.
Well, that one really helped, we had Gordon in here and, and we got in a discussion right before you got on about, you know, if they have the demo plan and, and everything gets torn down, hopefully something gets built.
Right.
That's our concern.
Yeah.
He was gonna check into that?
Yeah, uh, what are, where are we at with Starbucks and their signs?
Um, actually, now that you mentioned it, I was gonna get Peter information on that, and I apologize, I did not.
Okay.
So I can, I will try to get you that by the end of the week, Peter. But yeah, I, it is, it is still where it sat last time we spoke.
Yep, and if we messed up, I guess we, they win.
So one theory is that we approved three signs on the building, right? The other theory is that we did not, and that they put two signs up in addition to what we approved, so.
Possibly.
May have even more possibilities, but.
Sign exhibits on the site plan, people, elevations, could be that, but again, just first go back and get a sign permit. For each and every sign.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the planning board back then would have been endorsing the permit before it goes to the building commission.
So what we would be looking for would be the sign permits for the building.
That the planning board signed off back then.
Yeah.
Before the building commission actually issued.
Not necessarily, so if, if, if the site plan showed three signs, and it, and it was an approved site plan, that's not enough, we're saying, it needs.
That's a round.
It's needs to have sign permits to.
Yeah. Okay, um, we have minutes on, uh, May eighth.
I have one question, um, page one, about three quarters of the way down, under this paragraph that begins discussion, is a line that says asterisk, technical issues dash nine minutes asterisk, what does that mean?
When we had problems with the Zoom.
Oh, 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 yeah, technical issues with Zoom, oh, okay.
Nine minutes, not, not the infamous eighteen minutes.
Thought we could do it again and get up to eighteen, yeah.
And it's good, Beth, you'll have to look that one up. Eighteen, eighteen minutes of missing recording. Okay.
This is, this is old people.
You're too young for us old people.
Look up Rosemary Woods.
Stretch near the Dixon.
Yeah.
Who's mixing your stuff? Okay, move.
Do, do we want to clarify that as technical, no, okay.
As long as people understand what it is.
Right. Uh, entertain emotion?
A second.
Hey, uh, roll call, Peter?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi.
Conrad? Buck Donovan, hi. Um, any tom, topic, share, could not reasonably anticipate, Beth, we had what's up with Don Fitzgerald, he's, I saw some email going back and forth about the Sunoco sign. Matt, do you have anything on this for us?
Is, oh, yeah, the Sunoco sign, um, I, basically, Don just wanted to, to send it to you so that you were in lieu of things like Starbucks, um, you know, just get kind of an opinion, but for the most part, this, the sign at Sunoco, they just want to change it out, it's essentially the exact same sign, and it's the same size, and it does the exact same things as far as lettering and illumination, so you know, my, my feeling was that it was fine, but, um, I know Don just felt like, hey, let's, let's throw it out there, and I kind of agreed with that.
Yep, then, when we saw a new, yeah, when, when we saw a new sign out there, we definitely would be wondering, so.
Correct.
Make, yeah. Cause, cause now we don't, it's funny, we, we go by and it's like, gee, I wonder if they really got a permit for that or not.
Well, we, we're supposed to get a report.
Yeah.
After a, after a sign permit has been issued, you're gonna send us reports, right, Matt?
Yeah, um, actually, we were just talking about that in the office, I've got a system so that that happens now.
Good, that'll be good.
That way, at least we, we know, you know, we see their sign, we know that it's legit.
Yep, I agree.
That's all I had, so we're all set on that, um, anybody else?
Yeah, quick question. And we're waiting for a solution on the one oh two cannabis folks, do we happen to know if we've heard of that solution yet? We're supposed to get back to selectmen and.
Yeah, um, I don't believe we've heard anything, that's, and that's selectmen.
And the other issue was, uh, cannabis retail.
Yeah.
Or even, even the, uh. We're trying to find out what the, what the revenue.
The town is.
Out to the town was gonna be, uh, do we happen to know what that, what that is yet, or?
Four hundred and fifty.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Beth.
What period?
Got almost half a million dollars from the cannabis people? That's small peanuts.
Oh, I know.
Is that the retail and the manufacturing, or just retail?
More than I would've guessed.
Uh, with the issues, uh, the one that went on, or idea of changing the zoning for setbacks that went down in defeat at town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Move ahead with that?
Wish Gordon, um, yeah, he had to run away. I believe we have to wait two years on that, but then.
We put the same thing on.
That same issue, I believe.
But if you change it, you go from, instead of all the way back, and you went back with a.
A percentage, or do, do one of those crazy calculations?
That is a new application, but it's not the same application.
The zoning on the same issue.
I don't know how narrow the provision is, I'd have to look. I know you can't, you can't, if you're defeated, you can't send the same thing.
No.
How different it has to be is the question. The other thing we could do is we could look at the setbacks. I think we have one large setback on one side of the road and a narrow setback on the other side.
Seventy feet on the side.
On the north side, seventy feet.
I know we, we keep talking about the, the set, the seventy-five feet setback, and if you look at a commercial property, and by the time you get done with some room off the curb, a buffer strip, and then a, a small parking area, you're, you're at that seventy-five or more, you're close, you know, so seventy-five isn't a horrible number. That, cause gotta remember, we got, there's supposed to be a buffer strip always.
How did we get to fifteen on the south side, or twenty-five, or whatever it is?
On, on the side.
Side.
The, the front setback, everybody keeps talking about the seventy-five feet is too much.
We're, on the, on the south side of the road, what is the?
That's, that's industri, that's industrial.
What's the setback?
Probably thirty feet.
Um, yeah.
So, I mean, I, I agree that industrial is different from commercial.
Yeah.
But is it that different?
Well, you're usually thinking that you're gonna have a business with, with public coming in and out versus industrial is gonna be trucking.
Would it change enough if we made it so that we would do it a case-by-case scenario? Make it blanket for that area? If somebody comes in and needs X amount of feet, just change it for them and bring the, the butters in per comments.
The, the setback, or?
Well, not the setback.
I think that how far.
The zoning.
Well, we were trying to do that, that, that's why we had, did it all under special permit, where we'd have that.
Cause we, it got torpedoed on, was, it came, came back to, uh, cannabis, came back to the Quarry Hill Industrial Park, stuff that's.
Nothing's in a split zone. Yeah.
What about moving this, reducing seventy-five feet to fifty? I, I don't really like the idea of zoning it in such a way that all the parking has to be between the road and the business.
That's true.
I'd rather have the parking out back and the business up, up closer.
The flexibility and function back, then it's your choice, I mean, you can put it on.
Yeah, yeah.
What's, or do you have the?
At forty feet.
In, which, what's an R V? How about R V?
Seventy-five.
We look at changing that.
Give some relief, I mean, that's, that's the problem now, whereas.
Right, but the, the, the split zone is the, is what we're trying to do.
So who do we talk about, who do we talk to to find out how much flexibility we have in refounding this thing in the fall?
Charlie. So if we, if we propose, let's say hypothetically, we propose what Gordon said he was gonna amend it to, but didn't, but didn't. Is that, is that, is that different enough to, uh, allow us to proceed?
I mean, does that solve our, our problem, though?
You know, I didn't really like it because
I'd rather solve our problem than appease Gordon.
Yeah.
I agree.
Well, I'd rather get something, something bad.
I was not on, I was very unhappy with that.
I was, I was really, I wish, I would tell him right now that I was, for him to say that we didn't look at other alternatives, um, was unfortunate, because we did look at a lot of alternatives.
I'll tell you, from a development standpoint, if you got a two-hundred-foot zone line for business, and you add a hundred feet, now we got a three-hundred-feet of depth. We could do some work with three-hundred-feet of depth.
Right, but like, on those ones on one oh two, you only have about a hundred feet, brings you to two hundred.
It's two hundred feet.
Is it two?
The zone line is two hundred.
Is it two hundred feet back?
And by adding a hundred feet, now we got three hundred foot of, three hundred feet of effective developable depth. We know the property, we know it, it grades up, maybe somebody wouldn't want to go back that deep anyway, but.
There's a swamp in there, too, in some places.
They got weathering, dilination.
I mean, but, and I go back to, there's other sections of town that are split also. We're very fixated in the, on the bowling alley.
Right.
Right.
You know?
And it's a huge, yes.
And, and you go out Route twenty through East Lee, and all of those are all split.
You know, the, the thing I didn't like about Gordon's idea was, he's, he made it sound like we limited it to a hundred feet. Well, I agreed with him that it would limit our discretion, which we couldn't do more than that, so our discretion is limited, but suppose the lot is three hundred and ten feet deep, right, and you're the residential on the other side, and we just extend a hundred feet from two hundred to three hundred, and now the, the business is ten feet from the lot. And we just extend a hundred feet from two hundred to three hundred and now the, the business is ten feet from the lot line. How does that, you know, how does that make any sense that we've, we've somehow protected the neighbors by narrowing it to a hundred feet?
On that lot, on that lot you have, but then if you have another lot where there's no neighbors.
Right.
There, there's nothing. You, you shot yourself in the foot. Yeah, you shot yourself in the foot with something like that.
A hundred foot is the outside threshold, it's still subject to special permit. That's where you get your, that's where you get your.
No, but, but what I'm saying is if you don't trust the board to do more than a hundred feet. Trust them to do a hundred feet, but if you don't trust them enough to do more, what, what makes you think they're going to be fair and just and make good decisions about the hundred foot limit? You still, they could still make a mistake and hurt the neighbor that's ten feet, ten feet away. Anyway, I, I just didn't like the idea of adding an arbitrary limit, but I, but I think I would support trying to reduce the frontage, I mean, the, the setback.
I was very restricted.
Yeah. And I, I think it promotes front yard parking. Which, you know, like the mobile station down there. Yeah, I'd rather, I don't know. I mean, there's nothing that can, you can do with that place.
Here's.
Due respect to people who used to develop gas stations.
Did that one.
Did that one, oh my God, well, what could have been done better? Let me ask the expert.
Yeah. And still need zoning.
I mean, if the, if, if it, someplace like that, it turned out that the candy store was in front and the island was in back. That would be okay, it might be better, right? I mean, I.
Also, the gas station, you can also have, you don't always have to have the pump islands in the front, you can put the building in, in the front and on the side.
That's what I'm saying, if you had, if you had.
Gas islands on the side.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's true.
Well, anyway, that's, I could, I could go, if people want to try again at something similar, I think I, I could probably support.
I mean, here's a couple hypotheticals for you. I don't know which one, I need to show this. Okay, the eye right now. Here's another way to look at it. Go the other way, the eye right now is Lee Lime. Lee Lime decides that there, all this is basically woodland out this area. Okay. If you guys.
That's, that's the place where the lady got lost, right?
No. This is, uh, this is Marble Street.
Oh, 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 okay.
So. So right, say you own that property, this is all woodland here, the quarry is back through this area. So say you own this and you end up owning this lot and you want to put your house. Back in here. Couple feet, a couple hundred feet off the road, you're not going to be able to. Because we don't allow residential and industrial.
Right.
Say if they sold that. So that's, that's why I'm saying, let's. And that'd be.
Well, that's the basic idea in zoning is that you don't, that.
Yeah.
Residential and residential is incompatible, it shouldn't be allowed in the same place. You choose which thing you want and where.
You go down Marble Street and they're very close.
I know.
Especially when they blast. Yep.
So what's the answer on this thing, I mean? You know, you know, we lost this split zone.
Wouldn't know, do we, do we try to ask Jeremiah?
Yes.
Or do we go right to the AG and ask them?
Yeah.
You have two, two choices. One is try again something similar and the other choice is change the setback. What do you all like? What's, what do three people prefer?
Like to do both. Let's do both. Let's change the setback. Let's. Beth, do you want to, can you?
Peg, do you, do you have any thought?
I'm not sure how I feel about it, I have to, I'd have to see if Warren or.
Let me, maybe we should start with Jeremiah and say, or if we put in, suppose, suppose, we can't ask for the same thing that was.
Right.
How would you change it? We, we have to ask a specific question, Jeremiah.
Either numerical or a percentage of.
Yes, if it changes, yeah. Yeah. Well, if we change it to a, if we change how far. Back in they can go, if we put.
If you went with a hundred feet, it would pass, right? Gordon was going to change it to a hundred feet.
Yeah. I, I, I think that's going to end up in our life, somebody's life, maybe not ours, but somebody's lifetime will come up and bite them. How things are going down.
But it's better than nothing. It's, it's better to have that than it is to have the current bylaw.
I mean, I hate to lose out on another industry coming in, we lost that, this car dealership. Which seems to be the one that's up in Lennox and it looks like it's a pretty nice building that they're going to put up. Uh, and we lost that.
For that one reason.
Uh, it's up like, going to be where Difick Drummer is.
Works your BMW.
Yeah.
All swag and honey.
Oh.
Then Mazda is going to go in where?
Knights Inn.
Knights Inn and those.
Both were approved.
Both were approved.
You're talking about we were made to twelve million dollars each, those kind of developments.
So we lost a nice little piece of pie there and just.
Well, I think, I think we just were tactically surprised, it was the end of the night, people, it was late, people were tired. And Gordon didn't make his motion and I.
Yeah, I know.
I think if he had made it, his motion, it would have passed.
But she had made that.
He wouldn't be able to. It would, it wouldn't have been legal.
Oh, right, you can't, that's right, you can't do it anyway.
Cause I was going to argue on that right away.
That's right, you can't do that.
Yeah.
It's, well, it, it would have made the, it would have made the zoning more restrictive. You, you can make it, you can go less in. On an amendment on the floor, you can make it less than impactful, but you can't make it more.
Right.
We were making less impactful.
Not if you're.
All the way out there.
Not if you're the landowner. You were making more restrictive.
Gordon was going to propose was less of a change to the status quo than what we were proposing. It should have been allowed.
No, cause how I look at it, okay, I own the bowling alley property and I want to put. I want to go right up and a retaining wall up the back.
Yeah. Back.
Go beyond two hundred, go to three hundred and fifty feet. But now you guys just put it, you just moved it to a hundred and you say, I can't.
You never sever the law.
No, but the, the, the zoning on the floor would have allowed that. And the amendment would have not allowed it, so.
Okay, so if this goes back to town meeting, I mean, you have to structure this as two separate. Also, what do you, what do you call it?
Amendments?
No.
Warrant articles.
That was the word I was looking for, warrant. We'd have to go with two separate warrants, one for the change of setback.
Yes.
The, uh, RIB zone from seventy-five to say.
Fifty or forty?
Forty, thirty-five, forty, whatever. That would be one, and then the second one would be try to. Division.
Yeah.
To either a percentage of the, of the setback or numerically to a hundred foot.
Buck, I don't care, among the last two things he said, I don't care which, whether it's percentage or.
I think percentage would, I think at, at least a hundred and then a percentage, you think that would work?
Uh, you mean the greater, greater of?
Yeah.
I, I think if Gordon goes against us again, we're going to lose, so I think, I mean, I, I don't, I, I think any, you know, if it's more than ten feet, I'm in favor of it. Cause it's, it's better than what we got.
Yeah.
So if it's something that we can pass that's more than ten feet, I'd be in favor of it. Why don't you, why don't you negotiate with Gordon?
I'll see what he wants. It's very, cause he's, he's a moving target and he'll come in in the eleventh hour with his mind changed.
Well.
We'll see.
You want me to call him and?
No, I'll work on him, I'll talk with him.
If you're willing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm willing on this one. I am, I, cause I, I hate.
It's hardest for you to talk to him about it, but I think if you.
Uh, there's, there'll be bourbon involved and we'll get it done.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're right, I just, I hate going through that work to, to only get halfway.
I know.
I'd rather get what we, but that's.
But if we can go halfway on that and then get the setback reduced to seventy-five to say forty, then now you got a building involved that's.
Much larger, yeah.
Reasonable that you can, you'll be hurt.
So my, my last question is, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Short-term rentals? Are we done with that?
You want?
Short-term rentals?
We decided that we were going to bring it back up when we knew in town meeting was going to be in the fall.
Right. Right, but the draft is pretty sound.
Yeah, I think so. Um, Jeremiah sent me a, an email after our meeting about one of the two, and I don't remember which it was. With us, with a very minor suggestion for language. And I wrote back to him and I said, that's, that's better, how about this, even better? And he never answered. So, um, did you get a copy of that? Did you see that? No. Um, anyway, we're very. There may need to be a little, you know, jiggle to it, to one of them. But we're very close and I think we're just waiting to hear the timing of town meeting.
The AGU is okay.
What?
The, accessory drawing unit, we're, we're good with that now.
I just don't remember which one it was that, that Jeremiah had the quibble with. It was, it was like a misplaced preposition or something, you know? Ambiguous in a way that I hadn't seen.
Two lawyers are all alike.
I know, they are, they found.
Misplaced preposition.
And do you want that negotiations?
You mean to pursue that, that further, to call him and say?
I'll, I'll do the, I'll do the split zone with him, you do the other two with him. Cause he, he, he won't come to, you know, what I fear is what happened last time where he, he misses the public hearing. And we have it all put together and then he submarines us again.
I'm gonna, what I'll do is I'll deliver a packet and I'll say, I'm coming by in a week to discuss it with you. And I'll camp out in his office until he talks to me.
Is that Jeremiah or?
Jeremiah.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question too, are we going to reorganize and, or continue on as we were?
Oh.
Which is okay with me. I'm just curious, after the elections usually.
We do not have that on our agenda.
Okay, sorry, so we'll do it next time?
Yes.
Okay, only because.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, thank you. Can I say one more thing?
Write it and put that right before public comment, comment, we'll get that right away. And next?
Yeah, the other thing is, um, I could probably do this next month, but. In July, the Historical Society is going to have another exhibit at the library, eighteen fifty to nineteen hundred. So we invite everybody to come if you in town. Just see it at the library. Last year it was the veterans, um, this year it's something different. And can I say this? Charlie Plent is going to do a talk.
I was just going to mention that.
Oh, good, good, Buck, okay, at the Historical Society on Crossways. I think it's the twenty-second of this month and it's all about Dodge Town and the original.
Settlement.
Start, yes, settlement. And, uh, it's really quite interesting what. I mean, I learned a lot, we talked about it at the meeting and Charlie, I believe, was ready to go to Dodge Town.
Cool.
Which is, um.
It was up on the hill, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Chestnut Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I always say Chestnut Street, yes. But anyway, so those are things that, um, they're not related to zoning, but they are of interest and good things happening in the town, so.
Great.
Peter, I got one thing for master plan. Plans to rebuild Main Street. I mean, that, that's going to be a.
You mean, you mean that this, the public works.
Diagonally park, parking that we need to do later. That means we had to do something with those high walls, uh, infrastructure in the street.
Gonna have to raise the pavement.
I don't know if the state will always do that.
So, you know, there's a bunch of things that I thought about that I never even brought up in the master plan, like. Putting a roundabout down by the park. That was stock. So that. Well, I mean, I didn't even, I haven't even brought it up because I, I figure it. Either everybody is either thinks it's a terrible idea or they are old enough to remember arguing about it. But, um, you know, there are things about Lee that are charming, but not very functional. Like left turn, people having a right of way on Route twenty.
As I said, do we have? Our problem is to do, we, we need to do away with the diagonal parking because when you diagonal park. Uh, you barely got room to get a tractor trailer down Main Street.
Yeah.
Especially with wide load, I mean, it's just not feasible.
Have you been over to Chatham lately?
Have not.
I was sitting in Chatham some weeks ago. Having a sandwich, watching the tractor trailers go down Main Street in Chatham after I had told him that. Thank God Lee had a wide enough street that we could handle tractor trailers because it sure isn't going to work in Chatham. And then three of them went right down the main street. It's a narrow, narrow street.
See these bump outs that set the parking? Uh, so you look at the end, since we just painted the lines, the lines, the, the driving li- lane on each side. Looks like if it's ten feet, it's a lot.
Really?
Yeah, so you get a wide load. That and, uh, walk on Main Street, all the bricks that we put in, the ornate bricks that were put in by hand. Trip hazards, I mean, it's, it's getting worse and worse, but it's just something that, somebody's got to take that bull by the horns.
So do you think that the master plan should propose to eliminate the diagonal parking on Main Street?
It's been, we could have got all kinds of state aid for Main Street. The first thing they told the town was do away with diagonal parking.
Oh, I know that, I know that's.
We need to come up with a plan, how do you get into parallel parking and have the passenger open the door? Especially on the northbound side.
I don't think you're going to have any parking in it. Parking along narrow parking.
You lose all your parking, that's, that's the problem with it. Take the diagonal and go with the parallels, lose a number of parking spots.
I don't even think that was, I mean, is that getting too specific to the master plan?
Maybe, but it's, it's going to take a long time to come up with a, a doable plan.
The, the. We don't, we shouldn't do, you know, very specific things, but the scope of, the scale of what we talk about as we get closer to the town hall gets smaller, you know? One block issue in downtown might be important enough to talk about, whereas. You know, five hundred feet up on Devon Road.
Right. Rob, you know, talk about a redesign of Main Street.
Right, I think that's, that's all I have to talk of, redesign.
Yeah. We could just ask, ask for people to develop two or three plans and submit them for town meeting or something, yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea, Dave, good.
That, that, we need help there, no doubt about it, it's getting worse. Uh, as I said, those bricks, somebody's going to take a tumble.
With bricks, you know?
They're, they're, they're regular red bricks, they're between the sidewalks, the concrete sidewalks and the curb. Uh, in some places.
In front of restaurants, you mean?
All, all the way down Main Street. Uh, the bricks, they either, at the very least need to all come out and be reset. Cause they're just set in sand. But it's gotten to the point that they, especially where we run the sidewalk machine, the snowplow machine.
It kept picks them up.
No, it pushes them down.
Oh.
Cause we get in there when it's wet.
Oh.
And we get with the number of people we would like to have on Main Street. Could cause us some problems.
Can you, can you set brick and on concrete?
I mean, can.
That's what Stockbridge did on theirs, they poured concrete and all their pavers are on concrete.
They're, they're concrete pavers too, I think, right?
They're, uh, yeah, they're something else, yeah.
Something or other.
Yep, and then you see what's happened in Lennox, that, that's another example. They didn't pour anything underneath and that's moving all over the place, you been up there?
I have, I have been, I haven't got out.
Do a tour, go down, take a Friday night. No, I'm serious. It, and tell me why you go, you go from, you go down Church Street, you go down Husatonic Street and even around the corner to Buena and, and. He's nine, ten o'clock, everything's going, it's going well. Here, about seven thirty, we roll up the sidewalks.
No, it's true.
And I don't know why, I don't know why.
Uh, I don't think. Enough of the night lights scene, I mean, it's, uh, we're getting to be an elderly town. Where.
Lennox is, they're not a young town.
Yeah, but don't forget to bring in an only city homeowners.
Yeah, but we're right there too, we, why can't we?
We'll get to bring them, you know, as they see it go, but they will go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know, is it the, the level of restaurants? You know, cause they do have some high-end. Uh, you know, you take Zinc, Alta, Bravo, right together. I spend a lot of time on that.
I can tell.
I like the sidewalks though, when they painted them to paint the, the red, white and blue.
Ours, yes.
Oh, you like ours.
Yeah, yeah, I like them.
That one looks good.
Yeah.
Well, they did move by your place.